In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act PL 1975, Chapter 231, adequate notice to this regular meeting of the Planning Board of the Township of Franklin has been provided. For everyone, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Chase? Carl Hout?
Here.
Alex Karazi?
Here.
Cecile MacIver?
Here.
Robert Mettler?
Here.
Mustafa Mansray?
Here.
Charles Brown?
Here.
Robert Thomas?
Here.
Jennifer Rango asked to be excused, she had a previous engagement. Godwin Amalola?
Back to school night.
Yes, that's correct. Chairman Orsini?
Here. So before we get into the agenda, just let me make one adjustment to it. If anyone is here tonight for the application for 3G Developers LLC, that's been carried to November 1st, and notification will be provided. Anybody's here for that, November 1st? Yeah, no, that's what it says, it says notification to newspaper needed. Yep. Okay. So, minutes for the regular meeting of July 19th.
Move that the minutes be approved.
Second.
Chairman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hout?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Minutes of August 2nd, 2017.
Move that those minutes be approved also.
August 2nd.
Second.
Chairman Chase?
Yes, I'm not the chairman.
I'm sorry. Councilman Chase, sorry.
Got a promotion.
Step down, Mike. Carl Hout?
Yes.
Alex Karazi?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Godwin Amalola?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. The first of three resolutions, 7276 Madison Avenue.
Move for approval.
Second.
Chairman?
Mr. Chase has a question.
Yeah.
On page 5, F, they also opened a discussion regarding adding a third street light in the middle of the roadway. I don't think we want a street light in the middle of the roadway.
Fair enough.
I think it should read the middle of the block.
Yeah, we can make that correction easily enough.
Move to approve with the correction as stated.
August 2nd.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hout?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Devon Realty?
Move to approve.
Second.
Chairman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hout?
Yes.
Oh, I said again, didn't I? Alex Karazi?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. And last but not least, Nissan North America.
Move to approve.
2nd.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hout?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Godwin Amalola?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Do we have any vouchers tonight?
No.
Okay. So, let's see, before we get into, well, all right, I guess we'll go in the order of the agenda, we'll do Sycamore Developers, then we'll open to the public in general, and then we'll do our hearing. So with that, what happened, Peter, overly vigorous golf swing?
Punching out an object or utter adjustment.
Oh, he would never do that. I know that. Yeah.
To answer your question, Mr. Orsini, I was before the zoning board two weeks ago, and Mr. Thomas twisted my arm.
Okay.
Causing my injury.
Now, that must be one heck of an application, then, Bob.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is a discussion item on your agenda because of an application that was submitted on behalf of Sycamore Developers for cluster development on property of 1865 Anwell Road, and the property also fronts on Cedar Grove Lane. Pursuant to your ordinance, we had to come to the board for the board to make a determination as to whether the project should or should not be clustered. We appeared before this board on June 21st. At that time, we presented the testimony of Mr. Arndman showing the cluster plans, and actually, the cluster plans are on the board to my left, which were the cluster plan that was submitted and you reviewed in June. Pursuant to your ordinance, before you make a determination as to whether this should or should not be a cluster project, there are various committees, the need to review the proposal. We were then sent to the various committees. Mr. Healy prepared a rather extensive report summarizing the discussion at those committees. At each of those committees, there were representatives of the township, that is, Mr. Healy or Mr. Dominic, I think, attended the meetings, and there were also representatives of the client. What we are here this evening for is to then request that the board approve the cluster option so that we can then schedule a hearing for the cluster development. If the board recalls, our request was to allow a cluster to R-20.
So, do you want to go over the rest of the memo that we have in terms of what the commission reports are?
It probably would, since Mr. Healy attended most of those, maybe even Mr. Healy can summarize his report, I'd be happy to do it, but I think Mr. Healy, since he went to most of those meetings, can give you a better flavor of what the committee said.
Perfectly good.
Okay, so, yeah, the memo was submitted to you in your packet, as Mr. Lanford said, it went to the Environmental Commission, Open Space, Ag, and Shade Tree. The Environmental Commission, well, number one, they had, on the overall issue of whether clustering should or should not be used, they recommended that clustering would be the more appropriate approach than the regular subdivision where the entire property was developed. They did have a rather extensive discussion of the relative pros and cons of the R-20 and R-15. Some of the pros that they mentioned for R-15 would be that there would be more clustering, you know, larger area of open space that would ultimately be preserved, but then they saw some of the benefits of the R-20, similar to what the board discussed when this was discussed with you a number of months ago. Ultimately, they really didn't have, didn't really reach consensus as to R-15 or R-20. Again, the overall riding comment that they had was that they certainly think that clustering was the better alternative. Open Space Committee, they recommended the R-20. Obviously, if they, I think that, although it's not said, I think it can be inferred that they recommended the use of clustering, because they are recommending R-20. That the open space area remain as it's proposed on the plan in front of you and presented by the applicant, and they recommended that a trail be proposed from the detention basin to the existing township, open space land, when you're looking at the map, to the left of that map or to the north of the site. The Agriculture Advisory Committee, they actually recommended somewhat of the opposite, they recommended that the open space land be placed on the north side of the property, they felt that that was the better, from their perspective, the better farmland to be preserved, as opposed to the southerly part of the property. And then Shade Tree, they basically didn't feel, they thought it was somewhat out of their purview to really comment on this, they basically deferred to the planning board to make the decision. They did recommend, a general recommendation that the planning board look for opportunities for connections, whether that be connections to actual existing open space, whether it be connections to existing open space, whether, you know, actually preserved, or even the cemetery is kind of an open land, even though it's not preserved, it is forested and rather open, and even connections to open space or the open character of the Anwell corridor. So, that was their recommendation. Basically, with that, it's really back to the board, kind of back to where, you know, you did have a discussion at the first meeting, a lot of these issues you were discussing at that meeting, you now have the input of these committees, and it's, overall, basically, it's really the board's decision, number one, whether you want to have the applicant to pursue clustering or not, and I think the applicant needs to have direction as to whether they should be doing the R-15 versus the R-20.
Yep. Question for you, Mark, for the Agriculture Advisory Committee, did they offer an opinion on what the likelihood of those 11 to 14 acres, depending on the density, what the likelihood that those would actually be farmed?
That one I couldn't make, that was actually the same night as the zoning board meeting, so Vince attended that. My understanding was that they felt that a piece of land that large, of that size, was suitable for farming.
Okay.
The only other comment I would make is I think we did spend a fair amount of time discussing the R-15 versus the R-20. As we indicated in June, it's our preference to develop an R-20, I think there are logical and rational reasons to do the R-20. There are some variances, as we discussed in June, and if we make the presentation with the R-20, which is what we would like to do, obviously, the board would then have to make the determination as to whether we satisfy our burdens of proof under the municipal land use law for the variances that we are entitled to. As far as the open space is concerned, it's our position that we're offering it to the municipality. What the municipality does with it once it gets it, whether the municipality decides to farm it or do something else, that's really up to the municipality, other than the determination that the open space is where we're proposing it, then the ball is back in your court as to what's done with the open space.
Mr. Chairman, I think you've hit on what my problem is, and that is that I view this open space to be of limited value to the township. Therefore, I would suggest that it would be better that, the clustering is fine with me, but that the open space should remain with the development and be managed by an association of the homeowners as they see fit.
There is perhaps also another option, which is that it would remain with the, and we can have that discussion, it could remain with the association, maybe it could remain with the current owner, with a deed restriction, if the current owner wants to farm it, that may be a possibility too. Again, I think those are the things that we can work through as to how we deal with the open space, and I don't know if it's really this board's purview as to what you do with the open space, or is that council's purview, but, I mean, we'd be happy to sit down and talk about the options and deal with the open space.
Bob, Tom?
Looking back on this, I think the difference between R-15 and R-20 amounts to about three acres difference in land. I think that I rather have the houses on bigger lots, like, I have no problem with the clustering, I'd like to see, you know, more space between houses, and I agree with Mr. Mettler, I don't think this open space is anything, the particular benefit to the general public. We can keep it off our rolls and have less expense involved with it, and still get the benefit of it not being built on, that would be fine. I would have no problem if it were to remain with the present owner and stay farming, if that's what they wanted to do with it.
Yeah, I mean, those are all great points, and I tend to agree with the both of you. It seems to me that one and a half of the two commissions that weighed in on any sort of thing sort of preferred the R-20, and I agree with what Bob just said, that it's really a de minimis difference that the clustering, you know, R-15 versus R-20 would make, I mean, if we're dealing with hundreds of acres, then we can have a discussion, but we're dealing with 32 to start with, so it's not much of a discussion. The only thing I would say is I personally would prefer that the open space remain where it's currently proposed and not necessarily adjacent to the woods, and the reason for that is I go back to the master plan and, you know, its desire for a green belt around Middle Bush, and I think that, you know, because of the points that you both have just made, that, you know, if anybody wants to farm it, you know, there's a pond there, right, and that's going to be part of it. It's silly to kind of have a pond on one side with some open space around it, just because it's a pond, and then the open space that you're preserving is a result of the cluster on the opposite side where, you know, it might be harder to actually reach, and I don't know that in this case, the contiguousness of the two spaces matters all that much. I would rather have the green belt around Middle Bush, the way it is in the master plan, but other than that, I agree with both of you. Open it to this end of the table a little bit. Ted?
I pretty much agree with everything that's been said, I think the open space should be at the south end of the property as a green belt around Middle Bush, which has long been intended, and I think the R-20 option is preferable, the houses will look better on bigger lots, and there'll be bigger houses. I think one thing we might bear in mind is that there is an existing house on Anwell Road, which I believe is projected to be removed, and probably the Ag Committee had in mind that that wouldn't be very good farmland, but I don't think that we're necessarily going to keep it as farmland. I think you'd keep it as farmland until if you ever decide you want to do something else with it, such as have it as native grassland. So, I would lean towards accepting it as township open space, which still can be leased out as farmland for as long as we want to.
So, it sounds to me, if I were to sum everything up, in general, we're in favor of an R-20, we're in favor of leaving the open space where it is on the plan now, and we're in favor of some mechanism by which the township does not have to control the property. That pretty fair?
Yeah, it's a fair assessment.
Yeah, okay. So, let's leave things there for now, we are required to, we can discuss more, but we are required to open to the public on this, because we're going to be making a decision, so let's open to the public on this only, won't be the general public comments, that'll come later, and then we can go back and, you know, do a resolution. Fair enough?
I move to open to the public.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, this meeting is now open to the public for discussion of this item only. If you wish to come up, please do so and state your name and address and be sworn.
Seeing no one coming forward, I would move that this public hearing be closed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody else want to add anything?
Just for the record, the surrounding property owners were not noticed for this, since it wasn't technically a hearing, they will be noticed when the actual application comes before you within the next few months.
Okay.
I think we're going to be back next month, the plans have already been submitted on the R-20 with the hope that the board did what they did, so if, I will check with you tomorrow to confirm the date for the public hearing, but obviously, I will, at that point, notice and advertise and do what I need to do.
Any other board discussion? If not, then I'm just going to propose that we make a resolution, that we endorse the plan as an R-20 subdivision, with the open space to remain on the south side of the property, and with the proviso that a mechanism be worked out, that we favor a mechanism to be worked out where the township is not responsible for the property, but that some other arrangement be made for that.
We haven't had any discussion of the Open Space Committee's suggestion of a trail.
Yes, good point.
Which would go in where access has been provided to the detention basin, and then circle around the detention basin and head into the township open space, which is next to the property there. I would favor this idea, I don't think it's a great burden on the applicant.
And obviously, that was not included in our original submission, but obviously, Mr. Arndman will look at that and either amend the submission that was already made or be prepared to discuss it at the public hearing when it comes up next month.
So, it said, they recommended no pavement, no gravel, and obviously, the obligation begins and ends at your property, so you bring it to the woods and that's it?
Yeah. So, the question is, does somebody want to make a motion and include that in their motion?
Well, I'll just amend my motion, which I just made, to include that.
Mr. Chairman, could I step in?
You may.
I just suggest that the form of the motion indicate that this board recommends to the governing body that it not accept title to the property.
Okay, I'll make that wording as an amendment. I did, I'm waiting for Peter to...
And I think Mr. Clarkin's correct, the issue of the open space is a council issue.
It is, but we will make that recommendation to the governing body, that some other mechanisms, such as the ones that you mentioned, be worked out to...
Right, that's fine.
...obviate that responsibility to the township.
I'll second the motion.
Councilman Chase?
Yes.
Carl Hout?
Yes.
Cecile MacIver?
Yes.
Robert Mettler?
Yes.
Mustafa Mansray?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Robert Thomas?
Yes.
Godwin Amalola?
Yes.
And Chairman Orsini?
Yes, and so I'd like to thank you, Peter, for your, doing your diligence with our commissions, appreciate it, and I'd like to commend the board for a very productive discussion, both in the first and now.
Actually, I think kudos should go to Mr. Healy, who attended most of those meetings and spent a couple extra nights out and made a lot of the presentation before those committees.
He enjoys that. Okay, I'll make a motion to open to the public for any general planning comments not associated with either this past discussion or the Aisha Abraham application to come.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to come forward with any general planning comments or questions?
Seeing no one coming forward, I would move that this public hearing be closed.
Second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so our only hearing tonight is Aisha Abraham, PLN 170001.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of the applicant. This is an application for a minor subdivision to create two lots, property known as 199 Wilson Road. The lots in question are lots 24 and 25 in Block 417.01 on the tax map of the township of Franklin. The subject property currently has upon it one existing single-family residential dwelling. The application is to subdivide the lot into two lots and to construct a new dwelling on the subdivided lot. I will present this evening the testimony of the applicant, also of our civil engineer, Mr. Fletcher, and also the testimony of Mr. O'Brien, who is a professional planter. There are certain bulk variances that are attendant to this application, which we will review in the testimony, and Mr. O'Brien will opine on those bulk variances. I will pause my first witness, Ms. Abraham.
Raise your right hand, please. Get yourself, you ready? Okay. I swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth shall help you, God. Please give your name and address for the record.
Asha Abraham, Ten Helen Court, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Okay, Asha, you are the owner of the property in question?
Yes.
And when did you purchase the property?
Five years ago, 2012.
Okay, and as I indicated in my opening statement, there is a house currently on the property, is that correct?
That is correct.
And that house is being rented?
Yes.
And you're currently living in Piscataway?
Yes.
And with whom do you reside in Piscataway?
I reside with my parents.
Okay, and when you purchased this property five years ago, what was your intent in purchasing the property?
To build a home on it.
Okay, and that home is for whom?
For myself and my parents.
Okay, and when you purchased the property, you looked to construct a home on the left side of the property?
The vacant lot, yes.
Yeah, on the vacant side of the property.
On the vacant side of the property, yes.
Okay, and when you purchased it, were you aware that it was a merged lot and that you could not build a home without a subdivision? You understood that you needed to do something in order to build a house?
Yes.
Okay, the house that you want to build, can you indicate to the board what house you want to build on there?
The house that we submitted.
Can you please talk into the mics?
I'm so sorry, the house that we submitted, the plan.
Okay, and it's a two-story dwelling?
Yes.
And can you indicate the layout of the house, you're going to have a bedroom on the first floor?
Yes.
And can you indicate to the board why you want to do that?
My parents both have, my mother has cancer and my father has heart issues, and has had them for quite some time, has had multiple heart attacks. The purpose is so that I can live with my parents and that they can have a bedroom on the first floor, and then that I and my family can live upstairs, as a single family, but together.
Okay, and as a result of the fact that you wanted some enhanced living space on the lower level, we need a variance for the side yard setback for the house, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so there will be, the floor plans that we submitted in conjunction with this application shows, excuse me, a one-bedroom on the first floor and then additional bedrooms on the upper level, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, now, after you purchased the property and getting involved in what is the development of this lot, do you understand, did you find out that there are some issues with respect to this property, such as potential wetlands, that there is a stream across the front of the property?
Yes.
And that the township also has a stream preservation, stream corridor preservation ordinance, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and in discussing this with the site engineer, and he'll testify later, we will be able to abide by all of those ordinances, and we will locate the house so we are not affecting the wetlands, we will locate the house so that we are beyond the stream preservation corridor, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, now, the present house that's there has currently one driveway, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and the way the driveway is situated, and the way the garage is situated, they actually traverse onto the proposed lot, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and part of our proposal is that we would relocate the driveway on the property, and we would eliminate the garage to the existing dwelling so that the existing single-family house will be fully contained within the one lot, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and you understand that we will have to construct a new driveway to get to the new dwelling, should the subdivision be approved, is that understood?
Yes, that's understood.
And that there are some permits that would need to be obtained with respect to that?
Yes, that's understood.
Okay, and also, you understand that what we're proposing, that we are going to be bringing utilities both to the new house and... bringing utilities both to the new house and to the existing dwelling, that the existing dwelling is currently on a septic system, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So we're going to bring water and sewer to both dwellings, we may need a permit to do a crossing for that, and we're going to locate those crossings right next to the proposed driveway?
Yes.
Thank you, I have no further questions of this witness.
Board, have any questions for this witness?
Yeah, when you are, I don't have a problem with the concept or anything like that. Your purpose is to provide for your parents downstairs, your family upstairs, does that involve the two separate households within the one, two kitchens?
It's a single-family house.
Okay, I just want to be clear that we should refer to this as forever, or in every instance right now, as a single-family house.
That is correct, Mr. Thomas.
I have a question, and I'm not sure to whom to ask it, but I'm guessing that it may have been Ms. Abraham's choice, why is it proposed to remove so many trees on proposed lot 24.01?
I think I can try to answer that question. If you look at the aerial, the proposed house is actually going to be built within, there's a clearing on that lot, and the proposed house is going to be built within that clearing. I don't think she wants to remove any more trees than are necessary for the driveway and to build the house, and I would be glad to have the site engineer reference on the plan that all other trees, other than those necessary to be removed, will remain in place on the site.
Yeah, but I'm not seeing why you have to remove trees on the lot that's already got a house on it. 2401 is the one that's already got a house on it.
Yeah, other than we have to relocate the driveway.
Okay, but there's a lot of trees that don't look like they're in that envelope that don't look...
Mr. Rascini, if we don't intend to, and if the plans indicate that certain trees are going to be removed, we can leave them there and take them off the plan, as remaining.
Yeah, I mean, I see from the plan where the driveway would connect, and you know, yeah, there's a couple that probably need to go out, but yeah, just minimize that, obviously.
Peter, your testimony was that you're going to revise the plans so that everything's out of the stream corridor?
That is correct.
Which means that when you look at both 25.01, when you can see all of the trees that exist on 25.01, they actually haven't indicated which trees are going to stay or go, but based on this plan right now, actually, most of these would probably go, since you have all of these utility crossings and the driveway and the seepage pit, so in order to comply with the testimony you provided, seepage pit would be moving back further, the house would be moving back further, I think you also said that you're going to combine, you're going to realign the driveway and/or the utilities to minimize the crossings?
Yeah.
I guess, so where I'm leading to is, are you going to provide the board with some idea of what that means?
Well, your ordinance, Mr. Healy, I think requires that from the stream, if it is a undisturbed area, there can be no disturbance within 100 feet of the stream. So the applicant's position is that we will not disturb anything within 100 feet of the stream, other than to do the driveway crossing for the new dwelling, and the utilities will run right adjacent to the driveway crossing, so there will only be one cut in that area. And again, I think if we looked at the plans that were submitted, it could be interpreted that the utilities for the existing house would be through that wooded area, we would move those utilities next to the existing driveway, so that all of the trees along the front, other than those that need be removed for the driveway, will remain, and we will be in full compliance with your ordinance.
Okay, let's keep that in mind as we hear the rest of the testimony. I guess you can bring your planner, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Fletcher? Paul, raise your right hand, please. I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. Name and address for the record.
Paul J. Fletcher, 54 West Pond Road, Hopewell, New Jersey.
Licensed planner in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am, but I'm here to testify as a licensed professional engineer.
But you are also in the state of New Jersey?
Yes.
Great, you're accepted.
Thank you.
Mr. Fletcher, you prepared the subdivision plan that is the subject of this application?
That's correct.
Okay, and as a matter of fact, this plan has been amended a few times over the course of the last couple of months?
It has.
All right, can you describe the subject property?
Certainly. Subject property is known as, commonly known as 199 Wilson Road, it's lots 24 and 25 in block 417.01. It's located on the southeast side of Wilson Road. It is a 90,000 square foot property, it's a little over two acres, has 200-foot of frontage along Wilson Road, and it has a depth of 450 feet. It's currently, has an existing dwelling located mainly on the right side of the property, has a curb cut and stream crossing on the right side, driveway that attaches to the single-family dwelling that's there. It is serviced by a well and a septic system.
And I assume, over the course of the time that you've been involved with this application, you've visited the subject property?
Yes, I've been there a number of times.
All right, and can you describe, besides the dwelling, what other things are on the property? Are there any environmental conditions that we need to be concerned with?
Yes, there is a stream that traverses the property very close to the front property line. There are mapped, DEP mapped wetlands towards the rear of the property and along the right side. It is our intention to have an environmentalist actually delineate those, and we will be obtaining a letter of interpretation from the DEP and providing that to the board should this application be approved.
Okay, now, with respect to the stream, if we are to obtain an approval from this board to build the house on the left side of the property, we would have to do a stream crossing, is that correct?
That's correct, we would need permitting from the DEP for that.
Okay, so any approval that this board would grant would be subject both to a DEP approval for the stream crossing and also subject to a wetlands delineation, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, now, you heard the discussion raised by Mr. Chase and Mr. Rascini concerning the trees on the property, and there were certain trees that were originally demarcated to be removed. Can those trees, in fact, other than where the relocated driveways going, can they be preserved?
Yes, they can, and I think perhaps what's happened here is, one of our prior revisions required those trees to be removed, and we neglected to not show them to be saved. So we will be very careful about only removing trees that are necessary.
Okay, now, if the board were to grant the subdivision, there are certain variances that would be required, is that correct?
That is correct.
All right, and you indicated that even with the subdivision approval, that both of the lots in question do exceed the lot area requirements of the zone?
They do.
Okay.
40,000 is required, 45,000 is provided for each lot.
Okay, we will require frontage variance, is that correct?
That is correct. The R40 zone requires 200 feet, and we're proposing 100.
Okay, and having went to the site, is the frontage of the proposed lots consistent with the development along Wilson Road in the area of the subject property?
Yes, it is.
Okay, and we are also asking for one additional variance, which is a side yard variance for the construction of the house, is that correct?
Yes.
And on what side is the variance being sought?
It's being sought on the interior lot line, common to the two properties.
So that if the board were to grant that variance, that variance would have no effect on any of the adjoining properties, it would only be a variance as to the existing house in question, is that correct, the existing dwelling?
That's correct.
Okay, and where we are looking to locate the proposed dwelling, is it in any proximity to the existing dwelling, so that that 15-foot side yard would be problematic, in your opinion?
I do not believe it would be problematic.
Okay, and lastly, and I sort of went over this with Mr. Healy, you're aware that Franklin Township does have a stream corridor ordinance, and that there is going to, we're going to have to comply with the stream corridor ordinance, is that correct?
Yes, I'm aware of that, and I'm aware of it now, and was, but not at this time that we designed the location of the seepage pit. We can easily move that back and stay outside the corridor preservation area, with the exception of the crossing for the driveway and the utilities.
Okay, and again, if the board were to grant the subdivision approval, there would only be one crossing for the new dwelling, and you would locate the driveway and the utilities within one crossing?
That's correct.
And with respect to the existing dwelling, we're going to be using the existing driveway, but you will locate the utilities adjacent to the existing driveway, so that there is no further removal of any trees within that stream corridor, is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you, I have no further questions.
I just wanted to make sure of one thing. I hear the testimony, and there's no need to remove any existing trees in the present driveway of the existing house for the sewer or the water line. It's been my experience, though, that the Sewage Authority will come by and make a 25- or 30-foot path wherever they go, is that to be avoided here, able to be avoided?
This is a sanitary sewer for a dwelling, it's not a sanitary sewer easement that goes to the Sewage Authority, so all we're doing...
So they don't need room to work on any of this, that would make the path bigger?
It would be a private contractor who would be installing the sewer line, it would be a private contractor who would be installing the water line.
Just making sure, better to ask now than be disappointed.
One question, Mr. Chairman. We do have a report from TRC, which was the entirety of, basically the entirety of the staff comments. Did you have any issues complying with those?
I'm sorry, Mr. Healy, I did neglect to discuss that. There was a report that was issued September 12, 2017, you've had an opportunity to review that report?
I have.
And there were certain recommendations from the TRC committee, we can comply with all of the conditions and requests therein?
Yes.
And by complying with all of those conditions, that would not substantially alter the plan that the board is looking at this evening, is that correct?
That is correct.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Healy.
Well, every, oh, yeah, sorry, 10.
Has there been any consideration of having a shared driveway for the first part of the driveway, so that there would be no new stream crossing?
Actually, we looked at this originally as doing a flag lot and putting one shared...
I noticed that it said "flag lot" on the...
Yeah, we did look at that, actually, there was a submission for a flag lot. We thought about it, I don't know if it really would work, it's fairly typical that all these lots on that street all have their own driveway. We, you know, if the board insisted on it, I guess we can just come off one driveway and then go over to the other lot, but I think it would be probably, we still have to bring utilities over to the other lot, and I think it would be better that each property had their own driveway, but if the board wanted one driveway, I guess we could revise the plan to do that.
I like defending the stream corridor ordinance, having had something to do with it.
I understand that, and that's why we did look at doing a flag lot there. But the problem was, we have wetlands, this lot, while there is ample area to build the two houses, does have some constraints, and we wanted to be sensitive to those constraints. But I think if we have just, and we can keep the driveway to a bare minimum, I don't think we need to have a 20-foot wide driveway, we can make the driveway a fairly small driveway to service that dwelling, so that I don't think it'll have that much of a detrimental visual impact on that stream corridor.
Yeah, I admit that there are advantages to having a separate driveway, but I just wanted to put that possibility on the table for the board to consider.
And obviously, the board has the right to consider it and can request it.
Okay, Peter, I'll call your next win.
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Name and address for the record, please.
Kevin O'Brien, O-B-R-I-E-N, Madison House, Suite B, Madison Avenue and Rowway.
Mr. O'Brien, are you a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey?
I still have that honor, yes, sir. My license is in good standing.
And you've been before at the board numerous times, so he's, of course, accepted.
Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien, you have an exhibit that you would like to me to hand out to the board?
Yes.
That you will use in providing testimony?
Yes, sir.
Can you briefly indicate what that exhibit is?
Yes. A two-sided piece of paper, one side is the neighborhood setback analysis performed by Mr. Fletcher's company, and the other side is a blow-up of the tax map for this area.
I'd like to mark that as A1.
Let's mark it A1 on the opposite page, A2.
Thank you.
Okay, we got it. Which one is A1?
I marked the neighborhood setback analysis as A1, and the tax map is A2.
The variances that are being requested tonight as part of the subdivision include the side yard setback that Mr. Fletcher discussed, and the lot width of 100 feet, where 200 feet is required. The neighborhood setback analysis, and again, this is taken from the Fletcher plan that you've got as part of your packet, shows the house widths of the various homes in the neighborhood on both sides of the street on 100-foot lots. There are nine homes listed there, and the average home is 51, 5'1" wide, and they range between 89 feet wide and 38 feet wide. The house that is being requested this evening is 60, 6-0, feet wide, somewhat larger than the average, but certainly within the range of the homes that are already in the area. You've heard that the master bedroom on the first floor is being provided, which is a bit unusual for a home, most bedrooms are on the second floor, but the reason it's being done is to allow accessibility for elderly parents. In the future, that will be a house that will be accessible for other folks who have accessibility issues. The second page, the tax map, shows the neighborhood that this application is in. From... From Martino Drive South, along both sides of Wilson Road, there are a number of 100-wide, 100-foot wide lots. They all actually have, taking a look at the, it's on its side, at the top left corner of that block, you can see the row of homes, row of lots, rather, and the very last lot to the south was recently subdivided in 2009, in fact, by this board, so that entire row that has the same back lot line running parallel to the street are all 100-foot wide lots. Proposing a 100-foot wide lot here is in conformance with the rest of the neighborhood, and in fact, in 2009, this board's resolution granting the property to the south, granting that subdivision, stated in their findings of fact, quote, "The board finds that the applicant has demonstrated an unnecessary hardship requiring relief. Moreover, based upon the existing size of the subject property, it appears reasonable that the applicant be permitted to subdivide same, as such subdivision would be generally consistent with the area surrounding the subject property and general neighborhood." And while, of course, no action of this board is precedential, I do believe that those words can give you some advice on your actions this evening. The master plan does discuss maintaining a diversity of housing and stabilizing current residential areas, as well as infill construction. The municipal land use law, of course, talks about promoting the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare, providing sufficient space in a number of locations for residential needs, and to promote a desirable visual environment. And I believe that the application could be granted primarily under a C2, that the benefits outweigh the detriments, and that possibly the board may want to consider a C1 hardship based upon the row of 100-foot wide lots on both sides of the street of Wilson Road. The proposed lots are right-sized for this area because they conform to the other lots, and the proposed design will have no negative impact upon the neighborhood or upon surrounding properties. And I would conclude that I believe this application can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial impairment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance.
I also am going to show you, because I want to give it to the board, an aerial map of the subject property, and again, you've visited the subject property, are familiar with the subject property, does the aerial map that I am going to offer into evidence accurately represent the subject property and the surrounding areas?
Yes, in fact, one further note on that is that Lot 23, which would be to the, which would be lower on the page or to the south in reality, has been recently subdivided in 2009, and that lot line is not shown on this particular area, so that makes it even more conforming with the entire neighborhood.
I would like to move this aerial photograph of the subject property and the surrounding neighborhood into evidence as A3, Mr. Clarkin?
No problem.
Mr. O'Brien, while Peter's doing that-
Yes, Chairman.
Can you help me on A2?
Yes, sir.
Amongst those row of homes that share the common back lot line?
Yep.
Which one of those is this subject property? It's really just hard to read.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that, modern technology is not, well, it's cracked up today.
Mr. Chairman, I think if you look at, on page seven of the TRC report-
Yep.
-it might give you a better sense, is an aerial photograph that shows the subject property, and then it shows the existing lots along the same side of Wilson Road going up to Martino, and then on the opposite side of Wilson, you can also see a number of lots that all seem to be that same 100-foot width.
Okay, so that's sort of, I guess, trapezoid-shaped lot that shares that same back lot line, I can see where that is on page seven.
That's the southernmost lot-
Yeah.
-that was recently divided, so the two lots immediately to the north. This current property already has two tax lot numbers assigned to it, so they are shown on this exhibit as 100-foot wide lots.
So, when this, I don't know if you're, how much you know the history, because I don't, when Peter first started his testimony, he said, our first question to Ms. Abraham, it was that these were merged. So were these originally subdivided to be like the other lots adjacent to them, or how did this come to be merged and now it's going to be un-merged?
They, in going through the records, it appears that these lots have always had different lot numbers, so that at one time they were separate, separate lots. As you can see from the aerial photograph that I gave you, and also from Mr. O'Brien's, O'Brien's exhibit, then the neighborhood scheme was really 100 by 400 lots. At some point in time, those lots came under common ownership and merged and became one lot, so what we're, in essence, trying to do is go back to what they were before, which was two lots.
Okay.
And the other thing, if you notice-
Let me just explain real quick, the bottom line is when you have two adjoining lots that don't fully comply with zoning, in this case, lot frontage by, they're deemed to be merged by law.
And if you look at the lot to the south of us, even though, that lot was Lot 23, and that was a 200-foot frontage lot, these lots were 24 and 25, which is obviously apparent that they were one lot, they were separate lots at one time.
Okay, I guess that answers my question.
Why don't you give us plans that show the subdivision of Lot 23? You talk about it having been subdivided, but every piece of paper we have shows it as a single lot.
I may have a copy, I don't think I have copies of the subdivision-
I believe it's reflected, I think it's reflected on that photo on page seven, I believe it's the lot just to the, just below it.
The lot lines are shown there, they're not shown on the tax map, though. Mr. Healy's correct, it's shown there on page seven.
You're talking about the divided lot directly to the south?
Immediately to the south, yes, sir, the two, the two lots there.
What is Lot 23 in this area?
To the right or to the left?
Immediately below.
I mean, yeah.
To the right.
Well, it was, it's essentially Lot 23, right?
Yes.
Yeah. So you can see on page, it's a little confusing, so you can see on page seven where they have the site outlined in bold, right to, right below that, you can see a lot, and you can see a line through it, and if you look at the aerial that Peter just handed out, A3, you don't see that line on there, so that's not just reflected, but it is been, has been subdivided. So, with Mr. O'Brien's testimony behind us for now, does the board have any questions for Mr. O'Brien?
I'm aware that what I'm about to suggest is anathema to planners, but did you consider the possibility of having a, an interior lot line that was not simply a straight line back, but that moved slightly further to the north, towards the rear of the property, thereby diminishing the side yard variance for the existing house? Now, it's just, I doubt that you would do it enough to make the side yard conforming, but four feet is an awfully small side yard. It would diminish any chance of disagreement between the neighbors and-
Well, I think if we put in the resolution that the new house would not be adjacent to or next to the existing house, so that, you know, the four feet really does become to some degree irrelevant, it's our intention to build the new house forward of the existing house, so that the four-foot, you know, difference on that side should not be a problem, and again, the 15-foot side yard that we're seeking on our side should not impact on Lot 25. And I think if the board wants to make that a condition so that the houses aren't next to each other, I think that will solve the problem.
They're certainly shown as not next to each other.
Right.
It's just, conceivably, some future owner could put a dog kennel back there.
Yeah, and, you know, maybe that house is one of the older houses, and it may be at some point in time, that house may come down, and a new house will be built, and then it'll have to comply with the current requirements.
Questions from this end of the board? If not, then I think Mr. Clarkin would like to-
I have a couple of questions, Mr. O'Brien. You indicated that with regard to the C2 analysis, that the benefits outweighed the detriment. My understanding is that the requirement is that the benefits substantially outweigh the detriment.
Yes.
Would you agree with that?
I would.
All right, that being the test, okay, could you restate your opinion? Do the benefits substantially outweigh the detriment, in your opinion?
I believe that they do, and I believe that that is evident from the exhibit that was handed out, that this now conform, or this proposal conforms to the character of the neighborhood, leaving it as it is, is out of character for this neighborhood, and that, I believe, is a substantial, a substantial advantage.
Right, with regard to considering a C1 hardship argument, as I understood your analysis, it's that, the hardship is that there are a number of other 100-foot wide lots in the neighborhood, is that correct?
Yes, and I'm basing that on the 2009 resolution, which also found that hardship based upon the same analysis that you just stated.
My understanding of the C1 hardship is that it must be a characteristic of the subject property that creates the hardship, not the condition of other lots.
So the fact that the subject property has a different condition, that is twice as wide as the surrounding lots, would in that case, I think, rise to that, rise to that argument?
Interesting argument.
I frankly, I would not have personally advanced the C1, but it was in the resolution, I thought there must have been a reason that the board found that, so I put that out there, and I did say this was for the board to consider, I'm basing my analysis on the C2. I agree that there is a substantial, of course.
Most people would not think that having a double-width lot is a hardship. I think an argument you could make is that by allowing the subdivision and the construction of a second house, you're also making provision to put the existing lot on township water and sewer, which is generally considered to be preferable, because if, as long as the house is on a septic system, eventually you have to replace the septic system, you have to keep testing the well and so forth, so.
I would agree, Councilman, and I think that is definitely a substantial benefit to the community. As you indicated, septic systems do go bad, wells frequently go bad because of what's gone on in this earth, in our environment, and having these, both of these homes, as well as the other homes in this neighborhood, serviced by those public entities, are definitely an improvement. Thank you.
Just one question, the, when I look at the analysis, I think it's pretty clear that the lot width is compliant with the character of the surrounding homes or lots. The one thing that this is, this proposal is slightly beyond typical, is the setback and the single-yard setback. Most of the houses have larger combined setbacks, and most comply with the single. But the fact here is, in this case, with respect to the single yard setbacks that you're seeking, one is for the four feet, and the other one is for the 15, they are both internal to the subdivision, they're both to the proposed new property line, so basically, the two homes that would be part of this subdivision would be affected. The homes, the existing homes to either side, those would comply with the 25-foot setback, so I just wanted to make sure the board was aware of that, so the adjoining property owners to either side would not have a house closer to them than the ordinance requires.
Thank you, that is correct.
While true, don't forget that in the future, should ownership change, then that argument becomes a little bit diminished, because then it is to somebody else's house, it's just not right now, so.
Except if that happens, it's an existing condition that they would know about when they buy the property.
Yeah, but we're creating that condition, which, you know, we ought to be careful about, right?
Yeah, and again, if the houses were in lockstep and line with each other, I think that that would be a concern, and that's why I think we've taken great pains to make sure that the new house is not next to the existing house, or that there is significant separation.
Julie noted.
The house, the proposed house, I'm going to assume that it's going to be a house that fits in with the rest of the neighborhood, gone to great lengths to point out that the 100-foot width conforms to the neighborhood, so we're not getting a huge oversized building on a smaller lot, and it does, and it's not out of proportion to the rest of the street, am I correct in assuming that, or?
Yeah, Mr. Thomas, we did submit floor plans with the original application, I do have a set of the floor plans here, and an exterior view of the house here, if I can find it, and I can put into evidence so that the board can look at it, but to answer your question, yes, it'll be consistent with the character of the neighborhood.
Basically, what you're looking to show us is, you know, what we approve and is what we get.
It would have been helpful if you had submitted some part of the plans showing the outlines of the houses on the neighboring lots, instead of restricting your plan fairly strictly to the subject property. That's often done when making an argument that the proposed development is consonant with the neighborhood.
Well, I think if you look, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but if you look at what is now Lot, what will be, under this proposal anyway, Lot 25, were they to bring that house forward a little more to be not exactly in line with the existing house on Lot 24, it would be fair to assume that it would be pretty much in line with the house on Lot 26, would it not?
I would agree with that, yes.
So, you know, while we're thinking about this, I came up, I came up with a question, Peter, and maybe you can answer that, maybe Asha can answer it. So, Asha doesn't live in the house right now, she rents it to somebody, she lives in Piscataway. What would prevent her from, you know, once that lease is up or whatever, not renewing it, taking that existing house that's on that well-conforming lot, and either doing a tear-down and a rebuild or a remodel to suit her standards? Why would we need to subdivide it to gain another house?
I think the reason is, based on the testimony of Mr. O'Brien, that the house that we are proposing is consistent with and in character with the neighborhood, the neighborhood scheme.
That's not answering my question, Peter.
Obviously, yeah.
No, it's not, just listen to me. Why do you need to have two houses if she's only going to live in one?
Well-
Because then, that more or less, to my mind, self-creates all of these variances.
Well, the issue of the future use of that property, and I can call Asha up here, and I think I can have her answer what her ultimate game plan is with respect to that property.
Because don't forget, under a C2, it's got a benefit, which is what you're claiming, it's got a benefit, it substantially benefit, you know, the municipality. What I see right now is something that substantially benefits her. As altruistic as that may be, and is well-intentioned, that's the way I see it from a planning perspective.
Asha, at the present time, the house that we are proposing is going to be your house and your parents' house?
Yes.
Okay, at the present time, the existing dwelling, as you indicated, is a rental property.
Yes.
And is it your intent to always keep it as a rental property, or what's your game plan with respect to the house that's currently there?
I mean, for right now, our plan is to keep it as a rental property.
Right.
We have no other plans, but there is the possibility of, my, I have a younger sister who might also, if we do, there might be the possibility of building a house for them. for them.
What do you mean by building? There's one there.
Well, for them to live in that house. Or if they if they choose to someday, I mean, I don't know what their plan is, but right now, our plan is honestly to just keep it as a rental property.
Well, isn't your point that by building a new house, you can design it with a bedroom on the first, on the ground floor for the benefit of your parents, and that's really why you?
That is our plan, purpose.
Want a new house.
Ted, I would point out that I live in a house with a bedroom on the first floor. It's called an in-law suite. And that's a normal two-story house on a one-acre lot. That's where I live, 24 Napoetie. Go check it out. I'll show it to you. I mean, we all live on the top, and actually, nobody lives on the bottom right now, and no one's planned to, but that's the way the house was designed in many in the neighborhood. That's not an exceptional condition to my mind.
No, I'm not saying it's an that it's exceptional. I'm just saying that's why she wants to live in the new house instead of the old house.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I'm just, I'm just, so again, if we're claiming from a C two, it seems to me as though one option, and and she perfectly explained why she didn't want that option, but it's well within the board's purview to consider whether this is a municipal benefit and not her benefit. And I just don't see it rising to that standard in my mind, but that's.
I I think also, if you go back to Mr. Thomas's question as to the house that we are constructing, as to whether it is in character with the neighborhood, the character of the neighborhood is smaller, I mean, decent-sized houses on narrow lots. I mean, theoretically, we can, if she wanted to, if this variance were not to be granted, she can take, and you're and you're right, take that the existing house, knock it down or add on to it, and build something substantially larger, which may or may not be within the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah, but they see the character of the neighborhood, to my mind, just because it's conforming, doesn't necessarily make it a benefit. I'll so I'll refer you to your earlier earlier application on Sycamore. We don't do that because we love Anatole. We did it because we thought that there was a a purpose to doing that, to preserving that open space. That's a municipal benefit. This, I don't see that, if somebody had a larger lot, even though they weren't not conforming, it might be to the municipal benefit to keep that larger lot there.
You know, it it's.
I'm just saying.
Yeah. Mike, it's it's interesting, because I I did an application a few years ago in South Plainfield, where many of the lots were 50 by 100, 75 by 100, and modest-sized houses. And I had a client who wanted to knock down a house that was typical of what was in that neighborhood and build a substantially larger house, which in those days, they called them McMansions. And the although the plan, we needed one minor variance, the whole neighborhood was in outrage because it destroyed the character of the neighborhood. So there is, to some degree, a municipal benefit to to keep a neighborhood looking like the neighborhood wants to be. And what you if you say no, the possibility is that you can get a substantially larger house, which may not be in character with that area. I think the house that she is proposing, as testified to by her, Mr. O'Brien, basically keeps everything in character. So I think that's a thing to consider. Is it really a municipal benefit? Maybe not, but is it a neighborhood benefit? Possibly, yes.
Okay, I I I take your point.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just break it down just a little bit more, which is.
Yeah, just do that quickly, because I I just want to open to the public, because I know there's people here who want to talk about this, and I'm interested to hear what they have to say.
I'll do it very quickly, which is the the, I think you may want to, in your discussions, think separately about the lot width variances and the setback variances, because the way I look at it, they had do have a lot that's 90,000 square feet. They could, if they designed it properly, do a fully compliant flag lot subdivision. And here, they're proposing a subdivision where it's the side-by-side, and their argument is that's a C two variance, because that's more consistent with the character of the neighborhood, that the neighborhood is a a series of 100, 100-foot-wide lots.
Right. And in fact, we heard that they considered a flag option.
Separate from that, in my opinion, is the side yard issue. So you might want to just separate those issues.
Yeah, no, I agree. I see.
Also, the best way of keeping the character of the neighborhood just might be granting the variance for two separate 100-foot-wide lots. I think it was on the zoning board, we did this a few years ago, right up the street from this house, from this property, where we required house to be smaller and also to be staggered in order to, because the original application was much bigger. If if this is denied and it becomes a not stays a 90,000-square-foot house, and you get the big, huge house built on it, then we're getting essentially what we're trying not to have.
Okay, now that I I see your point. Okay, let's, let's.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, just, this may not necessarily be our purview, but I am curious in that we have heard nothing of, it's proposed to use the existing stream crossing. And is there any information as to the adequacy of that stream crossing? Has it been sufficient? Does the water ever come over that crossing? Does it ever go over the road? Do we know any of that?
I am sure, having been familiar with that area, that from time to time, that whole street has water when there's some heavy rains, where water comes on to Wilson Road. And I did, while you guys were talking, find the picture of the house with the floor plans. There's some notes on it, but I can move that into evidence as A four.
Who prepared it?
It is, it was provided to me by my client. It's Monster House Plans, and this is the exact house that they're looking to construct.
Unfortunate name.
Yeah.
I I I just put it into evidence. I don't prepare it. But over the course of, to to continue to answer the question, Mr. Miller, over the course of the years, we've had some horrific storms in this town, and when we've had some of those storms, that stream has swelled and and sometimes caused the street to close, and and that's happened. The other thing that will happen with the new house is we're putting in a drywall to, again, contain the water from the house so that we're not going to exacerbate that condition.
Thank you, Peter. Can I motion to open to the public?
I move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any member of the public wishing to comment on this application should please come to the podium, one at a time, please, and give your name and address and be sworn in by our attorney.
Raise your right hand. Somme, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God.
Yes, I do.
Your name and address, please.
Is this on? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Let me just, whoops, turn it up this way. My name is Tom Young. I live 207 Wilson Road, which is the property that butts to the the new house being built. Quick question I have for you is, what is the square footage size of the new house?
From both levels, it's about 3,500 square feet.
Okay. And what is the size of square footage of my house?
I wouldn't.
1,600 square feet?
I would.
The house next to me is 2,200 square feet. So here, we're talking about building a house that fits the character of the neighborhood, and that's the reason why we want to kind of allow it to be larger or wider for these variances, and yet it doesn't fit the nature of the the neighborhood? So the the 100-foot variance that we've talked about, you've talked about, and you understand most lots are 100-foot wide, but the problem that really doesn't make any sense is that we're talking about taking a property and dividing it into two now. Right now, it's got a common owner, but it won't always have a common owner. So now what you're doing is you're now taking the neighborhood and you're telling the next builder that it's okay to build a house four feet away from the property line. Four feet. You can't sit next to a house and put your feet out without going in your neighbor's yard. And 15 feet is fine now, is what we're telling future builders. Okay? So although it's owned by one property owner, it won't always be owned. Second, my house is separated by woods. One of the reasons why we moved two years ago to Wilson Road, and my wife and I have lived on Eaton Way, we've lived on Schilling Drive, and now we've lived on Wilson Road for 15 years in this township. Okay? The reason why we're here and the reason why we we moved to Wilson Road is we love the wetlands behind us. We love the solitude, the trees, and the neighborhood. Now, according to the plans, and I'm sorry, but they keep on saying that, oh, no, we'll change that, we'll change that, but according to the plans that I have, they're clear-cut in that yard, and they're going to put up four new trees, two maples and two cherries. The rest of the trees they're putting up are arborvitae. Does anybody know what arborvitae is?
No, neither.
Drive through our neighborhood. It's that tree, that evergreen, that's eaten up as far as the deers can get to, and it has a little crown on top. So now they're going to take down trees that are 60 to 70 foot high right now, and they're going to replace them with deer veg, deer vegetables. Okay? So the entire, I'm going to have a a big house, more than twice the size of my house, that's going to be right on my front porch with nothing between us. The other thing, we were talking about the streams, and once again, the the stream, we we do have flooding when it rains heavy, and now we're talking about is we're talking about putting another crossing of the stream. We're talking about clearcutting all the trees right there. What are trees? Do trees kind of suck in the moisture when it rains? And now what we're going to do is I will be directly in the path of all that water that's going to come right down, that no longer has any tree line to help protect, prevent The other problem I have with the application is during the course of the question and everything, there's a whole bunch of, oh, yeah, we'll change that, or, no, if we do this, or if you approve, we'll we'll correct that. And how do you approve a application that's got so many ifs to it that I don't know what's going to be there? What are we telling it that if we approve this application, we're always saying, okay, it doesn't matter about the nature of the the homes and everything in the neighborhood? You can build a house that's as large as you want to on a property that doesn't fit in, and we'll approve it for you. So with with all the variances and all the things we're talking about right here, how does that substantially improve or help the neighborhood? The only thing I see here is that somebody can come in and build a very large house onto a property that doesn't fit, and then whenever they want to, they can knock down that other house, and they can build a very large house there as well. All I see is that it's a very profitable thing for a homeowner to do. And believe me, I don't fault you for it, but that's exactly what it is. The existing house, because I'm good friends with the renters there, they're great people, the existing house is actually a mother-daughter. We haven't talked about the existing house. There's actually two floors. Her sister and baby used to live upstairs, and so the one family lived downstairs, the other family lived upstairs. Okay? So we haven't talked about what that is. So what I'm asking you is, I've been a, my wife and I are strong members of the community. We volunteered at the animal shelter right here. I've run the dog walk for five years. And to have somebody come in that's got no ties whatsoever to the community and be able to do something just for money is something that we're the zoning laws for and something that we have you, our planning board, for. And so what I'm asking you to do is protect us the way that we've elected you to. Thank you.
I just have one question for Mark. So I'm listening to this with the right perspective. Did you not say that this could be a flag lot project with no variances?
Well, that's what I offered with respect to the the frontage variances that that are being requested. They the lot, the lot as it as it exists right now is is 90,000 square feet, where 40,000 is required. So it's more than double the minimum lot area, and we do have an ordinance that could allow a flag lot subdivision. So, you know, you have that potential, or the applicant is basically saying that what they want to present is a subdivision, just put it, put this, put aside the house size and the and the and the and the side yard variances for a for a for a second, at least just in terms of the lots that are proposed. The lots are consistent in terms of the size and the lot width with the surrounding neighborhood.
Right. I wanted that verification. I don't want to interrupt.
No, no, that's that's fine. We have anybody else from the public who'd like to speak? Please come forward. One at a time.
My name is Brian Ulrich, 209 Wilson Road. I live next door to Tom, who's next door to the subject property.
Can you raise your right hand, please? Somme, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God.
I do.
Your address again?
209 Wilson Road.
Thank you.
That neighborhood, you all know, is a nice, little wooded, quiet neighborhood. And I I don't remember the lawyer's name here, but if you noticed a minute ago, he like accidentally slipped and said, it's a larger house, I mean, it fits with the neighborhood. That house is not going to fit with the neighborhood. You all know that street. Down south of the subject property is all the town-owned property that's there between between there and Amwell Road, all that town property on each side of the road. I mean, the whole street is wooded, all nice trees. The whole front of that property is trees. It sucks up the water. My driveway floods. It goes over my driveway. It goes over their driveway. That Lot 23 that you were talking about before is mostly wetlands in the front of the property. It's almost, you can see the property there on that that printout. It's mostly wetlands. That whole area is wet. It just, this is not going to fit with the prop, fit with the neighborhood. My house is 2,200 square feet. The biggest houses are down right next to Martino, and they're little newer houses, but they're, I believe, in the 2,800-square-foot range. It's just not going to fit. And now you're talking about a four-foot setback? I mean, that's almost like, that's just bigger than ADA compliance for indoors, let alone outdoors. I mean, what happens when I want to build my garage now five feet from the property lawn? It's now it's compliant with the neighborhood. It's like there's stuff in the neighborhood that fits. And this doesn't fit with the neighborhood. Please save us. Thank you very much.
Hi.
Yes, raise your right hand, please. Somme, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you God.
I do.
Your name and address, please.
Gina Ulrich, 209 Wilson Road. We live next door to Tom and Tara. And the first thing I want to say is I actually want to thank the board to start, because I really appreciate the questioning that you were asking. It shows me that you do care about the neighborhood, especially, sir. I thank you so much for the questions that you were asking, because I appreciate it. Coming here tonight, I was really nervous. I didn't know how the board was going to feel about this, but I can see that you do care. So I want to speak to the fact of a couple things. First, I want to bring up something that Mr. Young brought up, Tom, about how the plans that they're showing you, if you're looking close at them, it's taking down all the trees. So they can sit here tonight and say, no, 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 that's not really what we're going to do, but, you know, I want to know who's going to be there to watch to make sure that that doesn't happen? Who's actually going to do that to prevent them from knocking down all of the trees that are there? I want to speak to the flooding. They mentioned, you know, when we have really bad storms, it floods. I live on Wilson Road, and every single time it rains a little hard, that whole street floods. Okay? So if you're familiar with Wilson Road, it's not like twice a year with a heavy, big storm. No, it's all the time. So if you take down those trees, can you imagine how much worse the flooding is going to be on the road and on our properties? So when they're saying that it's going to greatly benefit the neighborhood, I don't see how that's benefiting the neighborhood, flooding our properties, taking down the beauty of what's there. I don't, I don't see how that benefits the neighborhood. I see how it benefits them personally. Something else I want to speak to, when asked about what their plans are for the future, I'm sorry, you can sit here tonight and say that you plan on renting that house. How do we know? We don't have an affidavit swearing you to that, that you're not going to change your mind tomorrow. And then what happens? Who's who's going to stop? I'm sorry, you can sit here tonight and say that you plan on renting that house. How do we know? We don't have an affidavit swearing you to that, that you're not gonna change your mind tomorrow. And then what happens? Who's, who's gonna stop something else from happening? Let's talk to the point of the existing house that's there. It's a mother-daughter house. I believe that you're saying that you want this new house because you wanna be able to take care of your parents. I'm thinking in a mother-daughter house, that house is set up to take care of your parents. Why can't you use that house? Why is it that you have to build a monster home? And it's ironic that the company that's doing it is called Monster Homes because that's what you're intending to do. I'm not understanding why you need to build that monster home to take care of your mom and dad. I'm thinking you can do it in the mother-daughter house that's already there. I don't believe that you have no intentions of selling that rental house in the future. I don't believe anything that's being said. I also don't believe that they don't have intentions of knocking down every single tree that's there. I don't believe any of it. So they can say to you all they want, that that's not their intention? No, that is their intention. This does not benefit the neighborhood, this is only benefiting them. So if you wanna talk to the people that have been living here, and again, I can attest to Tom too, you know, we're members of the community. I volunteer at the Franklin Animal Shelter. Every Saturday, I'm there. Okay, I am, I am an active member of this community and these people are not. They're coming in and they're not thinking about what's gonna happen to our property. And Tom and Tara, no matter how you build it, whether you're doing a flag lot, you're cutting it directly in half, they are so affected by where that monster house that they're gonna build, their home is completely affected by it. And I don't think it's fair that they bought their house with the knowledge, look at how beautiful all the land is around it, so that someone can just come in and just tear it all down. Schoolteacher in me, I'm gonna say that Dr. Seuss said it best when he wrote The Lorax. I speak for the trees. Okay, the trees have no tongues, so I'm gonna speak for the trees and I'm gonna speak for our community. Please help us do something about this constant, constant building. Okay, we were ranked number five in the whole United States. You keep knocking down all the trees and building these monster houses, I don't see how we're ranked number five anymore. And the only people that can stop this from happening is our elected people. We elected you for a reason. We need your help. We need you to be our voice. We need you to speak for us. So please, put a stop to this. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come forward on this application? Bob?
Seeing no one else coming forward, I would move that the public hearing on this application be closed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, thank you all for your comments. I caution you this, as somebody who's been on the planning board since, I think, 2001 or 2002 and chair for a number of years now, that we absolutely care for the, care for the community. Sometimes that and land use law are diametrically opposite, so I will, I will... Now, Peter, I'm sure you wanna say something, but, and you'll have your chance, but... I don't think the board, and I certainly don't as a whole, have any issue with the hundred-foot subdivision, that these would be, you know, lots that are in conformance with the neighborhood. I do have issue, despite Mark's point about the side yard variances, that that is not gonna be a permanent fixture necessarily as we go forward, because there may not be common ownership. But the thing that really gets me now is Exhibit A four. Because what you're showing us here is a house that is probably twice that. Certainly of the neighboring houses, and I'm sure Mr. O'Brien can opine on some of the other houses. Maybe it would be suitable on Michelangelo or Masada, but it's not suitable in this particular neighborhood in terms of, it's literally double the size. And I don't think that, you know, that necessarily advances any municipal criteria other than the owners. And I don't think it's necessary for this size house with, you know, features like, you know, a butler's pantry to be, to accomplish the goals that Asha has stated. And that is what I have a problem with.
And I'll be happy to address that issue first, Mr. Orsini. I've heard the comments of the neighbors. I think that perhaps we can, number one, we are asking for a side yard variance for the new house that we are constructing. If we eliminate that side yard variance, that would reduce the size of the house. But I would caution you that your building coverage in the zone is ten percent. We are allowed ten percent building coverage in the R40 zone. The one house is four percent coverage. The other house is seven point seven percent coverage. So both of the dwellings are substantially under what we are legally allowed to build. We would've needed a side yard variance for the new house, but I think we can eliminate that, which would cut the size of the house down. The other thing, and we talked about the issue of the flag lot, which is a possibility too, which would be two new houses on that lot. We probably can take down the existing house, create a flag lot. And again, given the lot coverages that we are entitled to, could have some substantially larger houses. The other issue, if you look at the percentage of lot coverage...
But Peter, that would also assume that we grant some variances because there's no way, if you put a dividing line down the center, that you're gonna have that kinda coverage on the house and still get those setbacks variances. It can't be done.
You can make a low narrow house. You could, I mean, it probably, but again, the bottom line...
You wanna make a wigwam, it's up to you.
No, but the bottom line is, again, we will eliminate the side yard setback, which then cuts the house down from what is... Let me get the square footages. We would knock ten feet off the one side and probably bring that house down to under, you know, three thousand square feet. So that can be done. The other issue with the trees, and again, and I do apologize because the plans that are before this board originally started out as flag lot plans, some of the trees that were taken out are not gonna be taken out. And I understand the neighbors' concerns. If the board is concerned about what trees are staying or going, we would be glad to come back, revise the plan so it is clear where the footprint of the house is and where the trees that are staying are gonna stay and where the trees that are gonna go are gonna go. That can be done. But I do think, Mr. Orsini, that by cutting the size of the house down and eliminating that side yard, you're gonna get the house more in character of your perception of what it should be for the neighborhood. But again, I wanna make it clear that both of these dwellings are well under the building coverages of the zone.
I'd like to be, to zero in on exactly how much smaller the house is gonna be if you eliminate the variance.
Actually, now we're getting into speculation, so here is what we're going to do. This is a freaking McMansion. I have no other words for it. What you're going to do is, we're not gonna do anything tonight. Come back with a plan revised, show me the right trees, show me the right sized house, show me all these changes. We're going into speculative territory now with this plan, where the board is not gonna have enough information to approve it based on this. We'll be happy, you know, you've got our input. We'll be happy to reconsider when we get, you know, something that we...
One other thing I'd like to see, if you agree with that too, and that's an alternative for a shared driveway with one crossing.
Yeah, I think the board has sort of gone that way.
What I was getting at with the size, is I wanna see it.
Yes, no, we need...
Because it's too big.
We need to see if they're gonna propose alternatives, one crossing, two crossing, whatever it may be, a branch to the one house, then, you know, we need to see those side by side, much the way you did with Sycamore, you know, it can be done, right? You showed us multiple plans.
Yeah, my question centered on the testimony given by the residents of that area. Mr. O'Brien did mention that, based on the sort of analysis, right, that everything is going to be for the common good of the area. The new structure will bring more inclusiveness to that particular area. I want you to redefine what the common good would mean in that context for me. For me to understand why you think the new structure would not probably cause, would not be something like a miss, a mismatch in that location.
I think, given the direction of Mr. Orsini, I would rather have a plan before you and then have Mr. O'Brien testify as to the plan that is going to be before you at the next meeting with the changes requested by the board, rather than try to defend something that you're not gonna be looking at much from that.
I think that's fair and we certainly don't wanna prejudice anything in the future.
Okay.
Yeah, Bob?
Well, I would add to the proposed changes. The testimony that was given is quite correct, because I have a whole bunch of arborvitae that nothing is left of except a little cap on the top. So I think other kinds of planting would be really more appropriate. And I would also agree with the single crossing of the stream, because the more... First of all, I have no idea if the existing pipe is the right size technically, and there are calculations about that. But the more pipes you put in a stream, the more you're going to be constricting its flow. So it, just adding another crossing is going to exacerbate the flooding situation.
Can I provide comments? Personally, I don't, I don't have any issues with two driveways. I think if we were to grant the subdivision as proposed, that they should be given the two driveways that they're stating. I also think it's important as a planning board to make decisions based on the future. But the testimony here provided is that the future is a house that's gonna be leased. So I understand that that's the only future I could base it upon her testimony, which is the desire for the home to be leased in the future. There was a slip up in saying that there's a possibility that her sister or another family member could move next door. If that is the case, then I don't think we have an issue with the property line because you're not a budding, a stranger, you're a budding family. So I think that will serve to the benefit of the property owner as opposed to anything else. When it comes to the trees, I think that they've stated very clearly that there was a flaw in the preparation of the plans and that the future ones could show which trees are gonna be removed, which trees would stay. I don't have any issue with that. When it comes to the comment about members of the community, I think we have to give them a chance to become the members that they seek to be of this community. And the only way that's gonna happen is by allowing them to erect a home within this community and be a part of it. I think the size of the house, while it is large, I would assume that if you don't grant the subdivision, that they could tear down the existing home and build a very large home that's out of character with the community.
They could, but not without sufficient setbacks. I mean, I just, I appreciate your sentiments, Charles, but I will caution you that, you know, land use law and the ability to have people to be members of the community or what they may do in the future are kind of like separate issues and not ones that the board can consider.
Correct.
The other thing I think needs to be looked at, since you're talking about doing the cuttings and crossing that stream corridor and it will affect the runoff, it helped with that, is then replant plants that will even be better than the ones that are there and designed to help with the water problem.
I think those are all valid issues. Mr. Fletcher, who was the site engineer, is taking notes and we will try to incorporate all of those into a plan that we will try to get to the board. My only concern is, the staff has to review, once we revise the plan, staff has to review it.
Well, just, we're talking about future dates, right? So Christine and I were looking, November first and December sixth are...
Do they have to re-advertise or no?
No, they don't re-advertise, but I think we're all...
Well, let's figure out a date, because I mean, these folks deserve to be able to come back.
Well, we have to, we have to tell them tonight what date it's gonna be carried to.
That's what I'm saying.
I just have one point to make. If the new revised application results in any new variance relief, then there will be an obligation to re-notice and republish.
Yeah, that is correct. My suggestion, I know staff is busy, I know it's gonna take Mr. Fletcher probably a couple of weeks to revise the plans. Perhaps it's better to move it to December, which gives Mr. Fletcher ample time to revise the plans, gives Mr. Healy and the rest of the township's staff ample time to review the revised plans and issue new reports rather than to try to rush something in a month.
Yeah, so December what?
Sixth.
Sixth.
I'd just...
Carl.
I'd like to second many of the suggestions that have been made. I've already said that I would prefer a single stream crossing. I would like you to consider moving the lot line toward, the interior line that's toward the rear of the property to diminish the side yard variance for the existing house. As for the proposed house, I look at that, you know, Peter, you should've torn that sheet up and eaten it rather than submitting it. That is about as at variance with the character of the neighborhood as it could be. I think the problem is probably not so much the area as the height of the building. It's just, it's McMansion.
Mr. Chase, I don't tear anything up or withhold something from the board. If my client gave it to me and the question is asked whether it's good or bad, I provide it to the board. And I think I would be remiss if, when the question was asked, if I did not give it to you. That's not the way I operate, that's not the way I work.
Well, I think it allowed us to give the clients some advice. And that I think that she could meet her objectives. The house much more similar to the rest of the neighborhood. And I think, I think that your planner never provided any positive aspects for the community in the proposed plan. The only thing I've heard is what I gave you myself, which is really rather ancillary. You're...
We've got a little...
Going to have to come back with a plan that minimizes tree cutting, that shows a way of, shows new plantings and new plantings that will be deer resistant or fences around them. Yes, arborvitae, my immediate reaction always is, how are you gonna keep that from being eaten by the deer? But you've, you've gotta come back with some positive aspects to this plan.
I think my client and I have the message loud and clear. We...
Let me pile on.
That's what I need.
That's as inappropriate a design for a house I've ever seen. It doesn't fit anywhere in the street.
It started bad with Monster House and went from there. I just really did.
I didn't, I didn't design the house, but I think my client understands we will take a look at the house very, very carefully. And I do think we will need the time, you know, at least till December. We may even need a little bit more time beyond that, so...
Go to a company, maybe slightly larger house, maybe not Monster.
Just right near...
Carl, did you have...
Pete, I think you need, rather than the hundred by hundred foot area out there, based on the testimony...
I'm sorry, Carl, I didn't hear your first statement.
Rather than the hundred by hundred foot area that you did with the trees, you gotta pick up every tree out there that you plan on taking down and have it reasonable as far as a seventy-foot tree that's high, you're not gonna be digging a trench five foot next to it as far as your clearing limits, okay? Because, you know, the town has to sign off on the tree removal application and somebody will go out there and, you know, check to make sure it's correct.
We will look at all of those issues.
Thank you.
Okay, great. Your guidance, come back in December sixth, sixth, right, December sixth. And you know you can get the agendas online and, right, you know how to get the township website, yeah, okay, great.
One more thing. Mr. Lanford, will this board have an extension of time to consider this application until December seventh?
I will grant you an extension of time through the end of January, just in case we need to have additional time to get ready and come in with a plan.
Have additional time to get ready and come in with a plan.
Thank you very much.
So I will grant, do you need it in writing, or is it on the record?
On the record is fine.
Thank you, Mr. Clark.
Thank you. Great point. Are we done? Okay, motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Say aye if you wanna go home.